Good afternoon and welcome to the January 19th, 2022, meeting of the PG CPS Board of Education Climate Change Action Plan Focus Work Group. My name is Pamela Boozer-Struther, and I'm the District III Board of Education member, and I serve as co-chair of this work group with parent volunteer Joseph Jakuta, representing the Climate Action Parents of Prince George's County. The COVID-19 pandemic has made this a very difficult month for PG CPS school families and our communities. And I wanted to take a moment to thank our entire PG CPS staff for once again pivoting to virtual instruction and now keeping everyone safe in our buildings through the increased testing and KN95 masking measures that we'll be taking this week and into weeks to come. And I, and to everyone recovering from positive COVID cases, I wish you good health and quick, quick recoveries. While the primary purpose of our meeting today is to review the progress on the Climate Change Action Plan drafting process, we will also take some time to hear from experts that we invited to be part of our data collection. Highland Electric Fleets joins us to discuss school bus electrification, and Lunch Out of Landfills joins us to discuss public school composting programs. This change will be reflected in the motion for agenda approval. We welcome all work group members, special guests, and the viewers of the meeting, and thank you for your dedication to this climate action work. You can review past recordings of meetings at pgcps.org/climate. I would like to call this meeting to order and ask for a motion and a second for approval of today's agenda. Joseph?
I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda.
And that-
To add, I guess, a prior to 4.1, the conversation with Highland Electric on electric school buses, and then also prior to 4.1, a conversation on composting with Lunch Not Landfills.
All right, thank you so much. So the, the, the vote is on the agenda with the amendments. Is there any discussion or questions? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Abstentions? And I just realized I didn't get a second. Can someone be the second on that?
A second.
Thank you. Sorry about that. Thank you so much, and welcome to our guests. Next, I would like a motion in a second for approval of the December 15th meeting minutes.
I move that we approve the December 15th, 2021 meeting minutes.
Thank you. Have a second?
Yes, and I will second.
Thank you so much. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? All right, great. Thank you all so much. So, you know, in the past month since we met on December 15th, I know all of you have been experiencing this, that our subgroup members have been busy with meetings and writing rough drafts of the plan. And we'll have a very, very busy week ahead of us as we get some refinement of these rough drafts. And in some cases, we're still doing some original drafting. So I want to thank all of you for being so engaged. And I know some of, we've been scheduling some extra meetings and for taking that time. So once again, thank you all for helping us through what really is a particularly difficult stage of, of writing a plan of this depth and amount of years that we're looking to, to provide recommendations to PG CPS. So now I'll turn our agenda over to Joseph Jakuta and Kate Kilzoni, who will review some of our next actions, and then we'll move into introduction of our guests.
Thank you, Board Member Boozer-Strather. Coming up on the schedule, we are going to be introducing our work to the three Board of Education work groups. In the not-too-distant future, in particular tonight, we're going to be talking with the Operations Budget and Fiscal Affairs Committee. And also the, coming up, there'll be the Policy and Governments and Academic Committees. We also will be scheduling two town halls, one for students and one for the public at large. And we have not come up with a date yet, but they will, they should be, the plan is to have them prior to our next meeting. Our next work group meeting, which will, with good luck, where we will be reviewing the final draft of the, the action plan, will be on February 24th at the same time of 3:30. And then following that, we'll be moving it along. It is, as we talked about last time, a very tight schedule. And, but we are putting in good work and accomplishing much of it.
Yeah, thank you so much, Joseph. I know Kate let us know she did jump, jump off for a second. So I think with that, we can, we'll circle back to any, any more housekeeping administrative when we get to our portion here on reviewing our rough drafts. So I guess now I'll hand it over to Ramon to introduce our first special guest from Highland Electric Fleets.
Thank you very much. So yeah, just to give some background, during our transportation session, we had planned to have Highland Electric give a presentation. Unfortunately, that day couldn't happen, so they were, they were available today, and they committed to have that presentation. Just some background, Highland Electric, they're experts in integrating electric school buses into existing school fleets. They've been doing this work at a national level, and, and also here in Maryland. They, they have been working with our neighboring school district, Montgomery County, where they, they were, you know, to integrate electric school buses in their, in their fleets. So we are very happy that they have the time to be with us today. So with that, Michael, the floor is yours.
Great, thank you. I'll actually let Jerry kick us off. He's also joining us from Highland.
Thank you all. Yes, my name is Jerry Chessman, and I'm with Highland. And I would like to thank you all for your time today. Just a little bit about me before we go into the Highland model and whatnot. I was an extensive school administrator for many years in, right outside of Pittsburgh Public, in an inner-city school district. The school district's called Woodland Hills School District. I had a lot of success there. It was a very diverse district. I was a teacher, I was Transportation Director, Director of Operations, then Assistant to the Superintendent for many years. And I was able to join Highland because I had such a wealth of experience that I want to bring that experience and essentially take and provide healthy transportation for students across the country. My history's been grounded in equity, quality. That was the district I worked in, and I believe in resiliency for our students. And I believe all students should have the same access to electric school buses across the country. So that's why I'm with Highland. I want to give you that little piece of information about myself. Yes, I'm called all the time to come back to school districts, but my drive is to make this a national model to, to support electric school buses. So I'm going to turn you over to Michael Mansonelli, and he's going to go into, he's really our expert in subject matter, and I'll be able to answer any questions with Michael after the presentation. So thank you all. Glad to be here.
Great, thanks, Jerry. Can just someone confirm with a thumbs up or, or other way that they can see the, this slide? Great, thank you. So my name's Michael Mansonelli. I'm an Electrical Design Manager at Highland. So typically, I work with school districts once they express an interest and they hear about, you know, different ways of acquiring this product. And I really sit down, roll my sleeves up, and kind of look at the, the solution that will work for that district. So, but today, I'm going to put a slightly different hat on and spend the next roughly 10 minutes talking a bit about the school bus market in general, just to kind of educate you guys on the trends. Talk about some of the challenges with traditional electric school bus acquisition, and that will lead into alternative ways of acquiring buses. And I'll give you a brief background on Highland and our business model, but kind of the first two bullets are the, the main objectives of these next 10 minutes. So first of all, such as, you know, things you guys are talking about in this working group all the time, grassroots interests are on the rise. There's kind of three main pillars to this. There's student health, climate health, and community health. The one kind of stat I'll pull off of this slide for you guys is that the diesel, the density of diesel fumes is at its highest inside a diesel bus. So pediatric asthma and other respiratory diseases are just exacerbated by these tailpipe emissions. So a solution that has zero tailpipe emissions is greatly beneficial to the students, not only to the climate in general. So I, I'm probably preaching to the choir on this slide, but let's talk a bit about the expanding deployment. So we've seen a lot of deployment on the coasts. In terms of talking about single projects, your state is leading the way. We've already talked a bit about Montgomery County. They committed to 326 buses over a four-year period. But we're seeing this proliferation across the country as well. And on the right, I have some images of kind of some of the transformation that's taken place at Montgomery County at their bus depots, going from just kind of a, a blacktop to actually having kind of these high-tech charging stations across their depot, keeping the buses charged and rolling. And furthermore, this has gone from a proof of concept to a reality. So electric school buses are a widely adopted and reliable product. All the major school bus manufacturers make an electric product. Not only that, all the dealers, all the major dealers for these products can service them in your state. And furthermore, at their core, they're using the same battery and drivetrain as transit vehicles. So even though electric school buses are still relatively new to the market, transit buses have been around for over 10 years, providing a lot of, of reliability data on the actual mechanism that's moving the vehicle. And this has proven out, and some of the manufacturers offering up to a 12-year warranty, which hap- happens to fit the useful life limit of a school bus in the state of Maryland. And then on the right, talking a bit about range, a lot of people can have range anxiety with electric vehicles. But we found that the current technology meets, meets 90% of all of your AM and PM routes that you run for student transportation. So you can easily accommodate your current duty cycle, we call it, with the existing technology. And not only that, as you add more vehicles, their range are getting better every year. And I'll share a bit more about that on the next slide. Bus prices are falling. So this was a study from 2019, but showing that bus prices are falling primarily because of the battery cost. So the battery is the largest price component of these electric vehicles right now. And they're taking advantage of the fact that not only are school buses switching to electric, but almost every vehicle is switching to electric, and at its core, it's using the same technology. So this is different than other alternative bus fuels you guys may have discussed in the last decade or so. This really has a lot of tailwinds behind it. Going back to what I was talking about with range, as the range gets better on the Nissan Leaf and Tesla, it also gets better on the Thomas-Bilt bus and the IC bus. There's a lot of money coming down the pipeline. You guys probably are aware of the federal infrastructure bill that was passed recently, $2.5 billion earmarked just for electric school buses, and then an additional $2.5 earmarked for other alternative school bus fuels. So those funds were expecting to start be available for projects at the tail end of this year. This is going to lead to competition within states and frankly, within districts, because this money is tied to a limited production availability. That's what's on the right. Even though all of these school bus manufacturers right now are too old to create electric school buses, they only are predicting a limited amount. So projects that are quote-unquote shovel-ready are going to be prioritized when this money gets out into the field. So what that means is someone like Montgomery County that has committed to multiple-year deployments, already has proven expertise and the ability to get these buses on the road, will probably be prioritized over a district that's just kind of coming up with the expertise in-house at that time. I'll ta- I'll talk a little bit about vehicle-to-grid, also known as V2G. This is kind of a buzzword in this industry. What that really means is it's a program with your utility. For you guys, that would be Baltimore Gas and Electric, where you could sell any energy that was in the bus back to the grid during peak demand. So for example, in the summer, when most of your buses are parked because it's the summer, and everybody in the community has their air conditioners running at 4:00 PM, you can sell energy back to the grid and have that be a secondary revenue stream. So this is kind of marking a paradigm shift, if you will, where the school bus becomes what's called a dual-use asset. The first and primary use, the most important use that, that should not be ignored, is, is transporting your students to and from school and to their other activities. And the second use is to support the grid and do what's called energy arbitrage. So this is something to kind of keep your eye on. It's burgeoning, but companies like ours are building an expertise in that area. So now I can talk a bit about the traditional challenges with acquiring school buses, the way that diesel buses are acquired. It comes down mostly to a prohibitive upfront cost. An electric school bus today can cost you anywhere from $300,000 to $400,000. So that's, that, that, for context, a diesel bus can, is costing in between $100,000 and $200,000. So it can be two, two to three to four times as much as a diesel bus, depending on the state and the brand that you go with. And then there's a high amount of complexity. You need to plan, procure, do construction on your site to install charging infrastructure. You need to work with the utility, charge management, meaning what time of day do you charge? Vehicle-to-grid, if you want to take advantage of that, and then maintenance changes. So I, I can start to talk a little bit about other procurement models and the cash flows associated with them. So just looking at one bus, we can use diesel as an example. So this blue line is traditional diesel, costs you about $120,000, let's say, to buy the diesel bus, and then a little bit of additional cost for fueling infrastructure. So that would be like tanks and, and fuel stations, those types of things. And then it costs anywhere from $15,000 to $30,000 per year to keep that bus fueled, maintained, and repaired throughout its life. So by the end of its life, you're getting to an all-in cost of about half a million dollars for a diesel vehicle. If you look at a traditional electric vehicle in gray, you have that really high upfront cost, plus the cost of a charger and some other infrastructure. But then the, the slope of that curve is much lower because the maintenance and, and repair is a lot lower for an electric vehicle, and electricity is cheaper than diesel fuel. And what turnkey providers like Highland and, and other turnkey providers do is they wrap all this up into what's called a subscription price, where you pay the same price every year. So now your line is, is, is just a straight line. And you get rid of the high upfront cost, but by the end of the life of the vehicle, you're roughly at parity with your current diesel budget. Now, the reason that that orange line is below the gray line all the way on the right is because of the scale and buying power of, of a turnkey provider that's doing, that has a portfolio of projects across the country. The last thing I'll talk about before I talk about Highland specifically is transitioning a large fleet like your fleet at Prince George's takes a long time, if you want to do it economically. If you want to fit into the natural turnover of your fleet, which is about 100 to 110 units per year, it's going to take you guys 14 to 16 years to transition from zero to 100% electric, once you pull the trigger. So this is something that can tend to surprise people because, but then after a little bit more discussion, it, it becomes obvious that it's very expensive to buy 1,000 electric school buses in one year. It becomes a lot more economic and fitting within your, your existing budget to do it slowly and at the pace that you normally buy buses. So this is an example that would be somewhat representative of your school district. So I'll just spend a few minutes talking about Highland and our business model, and then I can open it up for any questions. So Highland was founded in 2018, which doesn't sound that long ago, but this kind of whole industry is actually honestly a little bit younger than 2018. We have two headquarters, one in Beverly, Massachusetts. That's kind of our main primary headquarters where we started. And we, we've started another headquarters in Denver, Colorado, to better serve the west side of the country. We've got corporate funding to the tune of about a quarter of a billion dollars. We have access to more for our infrastructure projects. And this is allowing us to pioneer with innovative kind of market leaders, such as your, your sister district, Montgomery County, to do these big, big private partner, pri- public-private partnerships, excuse me. And in essence, on the top right, what we're doing is we're allowing school districts to maintain their operation. It's still their drivers, their dispatchers, their mechanics. We provide the buses, the chargers, and any of the complex, you know, surrounding bundle of services that have, has to do with keeping those buses charged, allowing for one integrated fleet that's still owned and controlled by the district. I'll skip over how we do it for the sake of time. I can provide these slides to you guys after the fact, if you'd like. And in the bottom right, just showing that we are, we're making a push nationally and also into Canada. But we, we have a team properly staffed to support this big kind of geography. And as you know, we're making a big, a big presence in Maryland, and we think Maryland will continue to be kind of a leader in this electrification push. Just really briefly, kind of to show you some of the complexity that's involved in doing an electric project, these are the aspects that Highland really takes on for a school district. We plan the project, finance it, and build it. So this is kind of all that construction, building the coalition, getting the utility involved, those types of things. We train the staff, the school district. That's a big part of our model. We want to make sure we are upskilling the existing labor at, at your district. And then, once the buses are on the road and actually taking kids to school, steps five and six take place, which we take care of the charging and the maintenance of the vehicles, taking, taking off the plate any of the added expertise or technology risk that you would, you would take on if you just purchased the electric vehicles outright. And then the last slide that I'll share is just to emphasize that risk transfer a little bit. The design, build, finance, and maintain side is all taken on by that private entity in this kind of turnkey private, public-private partnership. Whereas the operational side, the dispatching, picking kids up from school, is still on the public entity, the school district in this case. And this right graphic is showing that these turnkey solutions are designed to fit within the current budget of a school district. So this is representative, this is not an exact analysis for your district. But just to explain the pricing and, and why companies like our structured our, our package like this is to try to allow for full fleet or partial fleet electrification without going out and completely changing your budget or, you know, getting, going out and finding, getting a large bu- a bond or some other funding mechanism. So with that, I can stop and, and help field any questions. Thank you, thank you, Michael. I think Jamie had a question. And then I see Michael Harris and then Donald Goldberg. Okay, let, let me address Jamie's question. I see it in the chat now. So question about shovel-ready, does this include approval from utilities for charging station infrastructure? Yeah, so, yeah, so, so shovel-ready is exactly getting to points like that, meaning that a project has been vetted to the point where the utility is already at the table and has, has approved, has confirmed that there's enough energy capacity, not to get into technical details, but essentially there's enough energy capacity on the local distribution network to even serve that depot. So that's a great example of what shovel-ready means. Another example is, is the school district actually willing to do this? You know, sometimes grant applications are, are written by a sustainability group or written by a, a private partner, but the board of the school has not necessarily approved in the use of these funds. So grant, a grant approver is going to look into those types of details to see, is this project actually going to happen if we issue this grant to Prince George's as an example? And then how long did the process take at Montgomery County? So we started talking to them, I'm trying to remember, maybe I'll frame it with, we signed our contract with them in February of last year. We had all the construction for the chargers and infrastructure done by June of that same year. So we obviously planned that to be in the summer when their routes were much lower. And then so far, we have 13 out of the 25 buses of that initial deployment at their site charging and commissioned, and there's 12 more coming on their way. So that segues into supply chain is another reason why getting started earlier is because it's taking 12 to 18 months to actually get buses, given all the macro supply chain issues that COVID has caused. Michael, would you like to ask the next question?
Yeah. The model that, that you have up there, I'm trying, is this the equivalent of SAAP purchase agreement where we do with solar PP projects? Where basically it's, it's funded and so that, that, you know, it's private-funded, and basically you're paying per year for you to do this for the school system?
Yeah, so the, a solar PPA, it was the inspiration for this business model. Our founder started his first company, and it's kind of the first couple decades of his career was in the solar and renewable energy space. So we're doing a lot of the same things under this model.
Okay, so the, how with the, the, the federal fund then say for it feed into, that is what you would get that funding, and then because of the terms of that funding, your cash flow model works the way it does?
Exactly. So there's kind of two answers to that, Michael, which is, if you have a scalable project over multiple years, such as Montgomery County, where they committed to over 300 buses, we can make this model work within the current budget of, of a school district like yours without the federal grant money.
Okay.
So we made that project work without major grants. Now, if you want to do a much smaller volume project of 10 or 20 buses, where we don't have kind of volume and scale on our side, then we, we do need grant money to make it work. And, and we go out and we chase that down very aggressively.
Okay, that answers my question.
Yeah, great. Donald?
Hi, my apologies. I got here a little late. My doctor called me. My doctor always takes appointments, but I came in sort of in the middle of your slides. Would it be possible to go back to the last slide that showed, showed the comparative costs over the 16-year risk period? There we go.
Oh, this one?
Yeah, yes. I wanted to try to understand that just a little bit better. First, the, oh, oh, I, I see my own mistake. I was, I, I was mistaking the red and the blue, blue lines for each other. On the, the, okay, so the budget with diesel, is, is that a cumulative budget? I mean, normally the budget would be, you would assume would be the same, roughly the same every year, correct?
Yeah, so in this, in this instance, I've, I've increased it by 2% every year. And also, I, I've also increased the, the fleet. I've, I've had the fleet grow a little bit every year. So thi- this may not be the exact represent, representation of, of, you know, the next 20 years at Prince George's County, but this is an example.
So I, I got you. I got you. I understand now what the escalation is in the, the red line. So the, the red line, we could call business as usual.
Exactly.
The blue line, the blue line would be working with Highland. So I mean, to put it very simply, what you're showing is that in most years, it would actually cost the school district less- in most years, it would actually cost the school district less to start transitioning to electric buses. There'd be a period there where the costs would be roughly the same. But it seems that there's no point at which the district is paying more. And you're saying that is not even taking into account the federal grant money that we now know is available. So uh, I guess rather than ask a question, I guess my question would be, why is this not a no-brainer? Why would any school district say no to this?
So there's not, not to arm your school district with reasons to say no to such an amazing deal. Um, a, a number of things that we run into is people are still hung up with just, it's the new technology. Even though we've shown them with graphics like this, that the private entity takes on those risks. And if there is a issue with the electric vehicle and it's not, it's not performing five years in, then the, the contract go, ends up in the favor of the school district. We don't need to get into all the nitty gritty details, but we still just find people a little resistant and hesitant of the technology and making such a kind of paradigm shift. Not only in the tech, but we're, we typically are asking, we typically talk to like transportation directors. And they may not necessarily want to go and present a new acquisition model to the rest of their district. So that can be kind of in, kind of, uh, uh, a hesitation as well. Um, and then the la- the last thing I'll add is, is under this model, how, how I presented it here, um, Highland owns the vehicles. And leases them to, essentially leases them through the subscription model to the district for their exclusive use. But just that, that fact that the school isn't owning, doesn't hold the title can also tend to be, um, an area of hesitation.
Well, if I could just follow up then with a question, I suppose if the school district owns its buses. Well, this is a two-part question. If it does own its buses, then there is some value in those buses at the end of fifteen years, let's say. Is that taken into consideration in this graph?
It i- it is not. So in, in this graph, um, we have, we have assumed as a zero terminal value for the diesel vehicle. And we've also assumed a zero terminal value for the electric vehicle. Um, and what I can say on that a little bit, Donald, is like I said, there, there's, I think the, the, the longest operating electric school bus in the U S that I'm aware of is seven years old. Um, so we as a company haven't made a bet on the residual value of those electric buses and we're not necessarily helping or we're not advising school districts on what that residual value might be. We're not, we're not sure if there's going to be any. Um, so it's something that we have not priced in, uh, on either side, uh, of this model. Um, but you're correct. Um, under our offering, at the end of, let's say you do a twelve-year contract with us. Um, we can take that, that bus and do with it, um, as we please. And one of those options would be selling it to the school district, um, or using it for, you know, other various, other various, um, opportunities.
Yeah. Last question, uh, i- is the graph that you're showing, uh, o- only, uh, um, applicable to districts that own their buses? What about districts that contract uh, for bus services?
Yeah, that, that's a great question. So that, that gets a little more complicated, um, in the sense that you, you need to then work with, you need to find some mutually, uh, agreeable way to s- either slowly get off of those third-party fleet providers, um, or else you're going to end up in a situation where you need to acquire a thousand buses in a year in an extreme case, which is just going to be very expensive. Um, but it, if, if you can, if you have a number of, uh, contracts that you can slowly, um, fall off of, um, with third-party fleet providers, then our model actually ends up being a lot more attractive, um, because they tend to be spending a lot more money when, when school districts do outsource their, their fleets.
Right, right, right. So if anything, the, uh, the, the contracting, uh, lockings aside, uh, dollar for dollar, uh, it would be an even better deal for, for districts that contract for bus services.
Exactly, exactly. And it just in, in the spirit of full transparency though, they, our model does not come with drivers or dispatchers. So a school district would need to then take on that, which is in this, in this macro environment is probably pretty, pretty scary.
Yeah, Michael too, tho- those costs right now, working with three P M's on the escalators are so high because we're, you know, we were, they were trying to pay drivers higher and higher. So my current, you know, one of my districts, we were, you know, we were up six percent, seven percent a year, five percent year over year, contract increases just to support that. So I hope that helps you there, Donald, too.
Well, thankfully, we, in Prince George's, we do have, uh, some really great bus drivers working for P G C P S. So we won't, at least won't have to worry about that, that particular issue. Um, unfortunately, we do need to move on to the next con- conversation, but I want to thank Mr. Chessman and Mr. Mansonelli um, for presenting today. This is really great information and I'm sure it will help out as we, uh, move forward with the climate action plan. And, um, I guess I will turn it over, uh, to, I think, board member Boozer Schather will be introducing Mr. Robinson.
Yeah, uh, thank you so much, Highland, um, Michael and Jerry. That was excellent information and uh, we've been, you know, eager to hear from you. So I'm glad it finally happened and it definitely appreciates some of those points you made about being federal funding ready and, um, and, you know, you probably know from introductions that, you know, we're here as a Board of Education work group because we have already set policy for this transition by twenty forty. And, um, uh, you know, we'll be working closely with administration on, on those next steps. So we're, we're fully committed, but there's, uh, clearly a couple points that as we release this plan in the coming months, that, that we've got to put those at the, that helps us prioritize basically is what, what you've pointed out today, and I really appreciate that. And so now I'm going to transition, we're going to talk, uh, more about composting. Uh, so a little bit of background on, uh, Joe Richardson, uh, joining us today. When I started talking to community members and, uh, P G C P S, um, staff, particularly on the, um, materials and, uh, education side, I would bring up my personal passion about composting and seeing our school system being, you know, capable of implementing that over time. And it seemed like everyone I talked to said, you gotta talk to Joe Richardson. So we, uh, we started corresponding and, um, so today's the day that we get to hear from Joe and seems like it's a particularly, uh, great day because he also has come to us from his, I presume, virtual testimony on a compa- posting bill in Annapolis. So, um, Joe, why don't, uh, you go ahead and tell folks more about your work and and, uh, what, what, you know, what you would like to convey to us today.
Well, thanks, Pamela. I really appreciate that. We began this discussion in the fall about composting. In fact, Donald Bell and Sylvester Conyers came about a year and a half ago, pre-pandemic, and visited one of the schools in Frederick County. It was, yeah, Yellow Springs Elementary School to look at the compost program that the students had, uh, had been operating. This is a program that, that needs to be initiated by volunteers. It was originally funded largely by Rotary Clubs. Frederick County Public Schools pitched in an additional ten thousand dollars. And in twenty nineteen through beginning of the pandemic in March of twenty twenty, we were operating in fourteen Frederick County Public Schools and four Montgomery County Schools. And we were diverting waste by eighty to eight, eighty-seven percent. Uh, most of the schools had a compost bin and a recycle bin. Um, the, the recycle, excuse me, they had a trash bin and a recycle bin. Most of the recycling was heavily contaminated. Uh, essentially a lot of students were viewing the, the blue bin as another trash can. And almost all of the recycling that we saw in every school prior to our program was, uh, unusable and could not be recycled. There was so much good, a lot of food, a lot of, uh, chip bags and other things that shouldn't be in the waste stream were in, in recycling. The program really essentially involves four bins and hopefully a fifth for food recovery. I don't have slides for you. I had nothing that's really current. But I have some data to share with you and, uh, something that I hope will really begin to emerge. What we, what we began to do is we presented classes, cafeterias with four bins. A bin for liquids with a screen to pour juice and waters in. The screen would prevent if someone decided to dump fruit or yogurt or something in there, it would catch it. Um, there was a green bin for composting. There was a, uh, recycle bin that we began to decontaminate. In Frederick County, really limited on what we're able to, uh, recycle. We take all of our material to, um, Howard County, uh, they don't want it. So they're really limited Frederick County on what they can actually recycle down to water bottles, Gatorades, um, cardboard containers with juice came in. And that was essentially at any other plastic matter, they weren't accepting. So we had to really um, burrow down and, and make sure the kids on, understood that we would only re- recycle certain. We were still seeing that fifty to fifty-five percent of all the material going to a trash can, especially in elementary schools is food. Twenty to twenty-five percent is liquids, just by pouring the liquids out. Putting the cap back on, throwing a recycle bin, we were eliminating twenty, we, we eliminated, you know, twenty-five percent of what the, what the waste was. With those two ingredients, when you're talking about seventy-two to seventy-five percent of waste, clean recycling thirteen percent, we were diverting eighty-four to eighty-seven percent of, of waste. At Lincoln Elementary School, which is a Title One school, I really expected to see less food waste because this is a food distress community. At times it's eighty-seven percent farms. So I anticipated, unlike some of the more affluent communities, that these kids would come to school hungry and eat everything. That was absolutely the contrary. Um, at Lincoln Elementary School, the rates of, of organic material going to trash was higher. And the, and the reality is this, um, students are acco- accustomed to junk food. I'd have a little boy in Lincoln who would go to come out of the cafeteria, he'd hand me his milk, he'd hand me the bun, he'd hand me a roll, his, uh, roll and a, and an apple. And he would sit down and eat tater tots and, um, and chicken type fingers because these students don't recognize healthy foods as a, as a food source. They, they're unfortunately in these communities, a lot of these communities are, uh, only exposed to, to fast food and that sort of thing. And, and the kids aren't eating anything that's healthy that's provided. Uh, we started a food recovery program that lasted for thirty-eight days before the pandemic in Lincoln Elementary School. And we were recovering sixty-four milks a day. Uh, in the cafeteria, the Frederick Rescue Mission was four blocks away. So in thirty-eight days, we recovered two thousand five hundred and eight milks that had previously gone into the trash and opened. We recovered over one thousand pieces of fresh fruit and vegetables. And, um, there was, uh, seven hundred pieces of prepackaged goods that could be recyclable that what happens with the Frederick Rescue Mission would come over, they would drop off a cooler every morning at ten thirty and pick it up at one thirty. Um, and, and this is the data, in the, in the course of a year, that would have been eleven thousand unopened milks in the trash from one school, which is appalling. Uh, since the pandemic, we, we've had a difficult time, uh, getting started again, and we're beginning to ramp up with all of our data and information. Um, Frederick County Public Schools was so impressed with the data, they had agreed to fund compost diversion programs in twenty-three schools this year on a one-year trial to see how much money we would save. Because the reality is when you take eighty-seven percent of cafeteria waste out of the trash can, you are filling fewer dumpsters and therefore saving money on dumpster pulls, reducing dumpster pulls and then, um, using fewer trash bags. Um, unfortunately, of the twenty-three schools, I only got five who were willing to allow a program to be reinstituted in this COVID frightened environment. Um, but the data I've gotten holds true. Uh, at Lincoln Element, excuse me, uh, at Green Valley Elementary School, we started on day one. And, and some things I'll share with you again, it'd be great to show this and have this graphic information for you. I can provide it for you at a later time. But when we started the program in August, um, only seventy children out of six hundred and fifty were taking free and reduced lunches. And the first few days of data, we were seeing about a hundred and fifty pounds of trash total with fifty to sixty pounds of organic and, and thirty to forty pounds of liquids. But as the year began to progress, more and more kids were taking advantage of free lunch. Everybody can get a free lunch at public schools now. Green Valley now has over three hundred and seventy kids getting free lunch. And the organic matter has increased exponentially, probably two hundred and fifty percent increase. There's several reasons. One, kids don't have time to eat it. When you stand in line for ten minutes or twenty-five minutes to get your food, you don't have as much time to eat it. The food isn't as, you know, uh, delicious, maybe is something that's coming from home. Um, so a lot of that food's not consumed, a lot of breakfast waste. Uh, a lot of organics is coming from breakfast. So what we found in, in Green Valley, we were telling kids, pour the stuff out, but we wanted to do, get engaged in food, food recovery, but we needed to create a network. As it turned out at Green Valley, there was a volunteer who works in the cafeteria every day. So I'll take it to the Urbana Food Bank. And in twenty-two days, we have recovered two thousand, I know, excuse me, let me get my numbers down. Um, in twenty-two days, what says, we started a food recovery program, we have recovered six hundred and thirty-three milks, seven hundred and thirty-one juices, six hundred and thirty-three prepackaged items and seven hundred and seventy-seven bags of carrots or apples. So that's, that's twen- that's twenty-two days of food from one school. Um, that's over, you know, thirteen hundred items of, of drinks that, that previously were going into the trash. We started a similar program at Middletown Elementary School. I, I would challenge you and I, the question I would ask any of the, of, of you members is, um, are recycling programs going on in your schools right now? Because in most of the schools in Frederick County, they're not even recycling. Basically, in talking to the, what's most frustrating is fourteen of the schools we were running in, um, I'm not back, I'm not yet back to, um, Butterfly Ridge where Donald and, and Sylvester visited. I'm not in, uh, Urbana or Centerville. The principal just saying, look, Joe, I, I can't deal with any of these programs right now. I don't want to try to do anything new. We're stressed out, my staff is stressed, so we're not doing it. Well, what they are doing is they're not letting kids get up from lunch. They're wheeling a trash can through and the kids are dumping all the trash in there and they're not recycling at all. At Middletown Elementary School, the building service manager had, was filling eleven bags in trash every day. We started a recycling compost program there in December. They don't fill three bags. Um, we have to have three bags to make it convenient for students to get but they're, they're not filling three trash bags. And the, the amount in, in, uh, at Middletown Elementary School, there's been one thousand five hundred and five pounds of waste that was all going to the landfill. That's now down to two hundred and thirty-five. So, so we're seeing a, you know, fourteen to fifteen percent of, of everything else is, is all that's left in the trash. We're going to encourage our students to get involved in a checks challenge and try to recover plastic film, sandwich bags. And if we were able to do that, we would be reducing waste by, by ninety-two to ninety-three percent. There's nothing going in the trash can at that point. Um, I wanted, I did testify today on the Senate Bill one twenty-four, sponsored by Shelley Hettleman. Uh, it's, it was presented, presented to the, um, House Educa- uh, the Senate, uh, Education, Environment and Health Committee. It passed, it had no opposition, so it's passed. What the bill is providing or requesting is five hundred thousand dollars in funds to begin compost programs in schools throughout the state. Five hundred thousand dollars will fund anywhere between a hundred and fifty and two hundred schools. That would cover all the costs of compost bags, hauling, uh, the bins that are needed to do this. And, um, we still want students to weigh and measure so we can determine how much waste we're diverting. Um, these, the House bill will be presented on the twenty-seventh of January. It's sponsored by Loric Stricudian. Uh, we'll be testifying at that as well. Um, it will, the money will all go to Mayo. And I've been working very closely with Laura Collard at, at Mayo. They'll be essentially the fiduciary in determining what schools will, will get this. What's great about P G County is you have the compost facility that everybody's sending their stuff to right now. Montgomery County does not have a commercial compost facility. Frederick County just got finally, after three years of effort, finally got certified. So a lot of the organic material is going to stay in Frederick County where it should. Montgomery County should not be sending organic material all the way. Montgomery County should not be sending organic material all the way to Upper Marlboro. But at present, they don't have an alternative place. I actually know of a site that they could be using. And each municipality needs, one of our issues is going to be is really capacity. Does the Anarodale County have a compost facility, commercial compost facility? No. Howard County, yes. Frederick County, yes. So our issues, you know, ultimately, we want every school in the state to be diverting waste, to be recovering food. It's so easy to implement. And what's really most inspiring is how excited kids are to implement this. It doesn't matter what socioeconomic group you come from. The kids at Lincoln Elementary School were just excited as the kids from more affluent communities. When you empower students with the ability to make change, they gravitate to it. And unlike an activity, which is a tree planting or a river cleanup or something else like that, this is a behavior-changing effort. It involves every student in every school every day. They then take what they learn at school and go, mom, you know, we should be composting. And they do, they'll begin to, you know, the real paid dirt ultimately is restaurants, commercial institutions, where Frederick County may produce two to four hundred tons of organic material in their forty schools. And PG's got a lot more service than Montgomery County. And on an average of a hundred pounds of organics a day. The restaurants produce five to seven hundred pounds a day. Fourteen thousand tons of organic material in Frederick County, Frederick City restaurants alone. So the ultimately, the reality here is teach students and they will teach the community. Empower students to engage in true climate behavior changes. They'll embrace it, they'll shame their parents and will begin to see, you know, we failed at recycling. And we failed because we've been deceived, things are labeled incorrectly. What's called recyclable in many instances is not. A lot of people have thrown their hands up, we weren't sending our recycling to China anymore. Quite honestly, we never should have in the first place. Let's just make it China's problem and send it there. In the meantime, the greatest source of plastic flowing into the Pacific Ocean is from the Yangtze River. So even the Chinese government is not properly disposing of the plastics they were accepting from us. We have to own our own. We need to make sure that we begin to be responsible for all the waste that we have. I can provide you with a lot of data. What I will tell you is this, there are, this is going to be a student-driven endeavor. There's a group called Compostology at Vico Agarwal and Angelina Zoo who, they testified today at the hearing. Ethan Weiss and Micah Shook, students from Bethesda Chevy Chase, acquired a forty-eight thousand dollar grant for the Royal Wildlife Fund. Only one of six large grants like that that were awarded this year to start compost programs in eight Montgomery County schools. Now that the Omicron is beginning to ebb a little bit, some of the schools are allowing us to get in there. So I know that I've got a limited amount of time to talk and I don't have a dog and pony show. But I would anticipate with the passage of this bill that PG County should be the recipient of grants for forty to fifty schools. What we need to do, once the money is awarded, is train building services. We need to train staff to be, you know, this has to be something that's operated within the school. I need a teacher champion and I need a green team of students who are willing to take this on. And green teams are growing exponentially in every school around the state. Finding students who care is the easy job. Getting a teacher to oversee it is a little bit tougher, but not really. Anybody who's heading a green team can do this. And because Mayo will be the recipient of the grant, this is going to help any school who wants to become a green school to become one. So many of the challenges are, you know, it's a student-led community effort. What is the educational component? So there's a tremendous amount of benefit to this. I'd been speaking to Greg Smith and a group in Hightstown.
Hyattsville.
Excuse me, Hightstown, never mind. I got Hightstown's near me, Hyattsville's near you. And there was a cluster of schools that were really interested in doing this. What I would tell you is prior to, if any school wants to try to adopt this, and even if they started in March, it's better than not starting it at all. Generally, you'll pay anywhere from a hundred and sixty to two hundred dollars a month for organics removal. That would cover the cost of two large sixty-five gallon containers. So for a school to start now, you probably need about eight hundred bucks, not even, to pay for bins and everything else if schools wanted to try to get it started. We were going to be starting programs in five schools in March of 2020 until the pandemic shut us down. But that went away and now we're slowly coming back. But it's coming and it's going to be a program that will not stop. You guys are in a tremendous position, more so than Anarodale, more so than Montgomery County or other municipalities because you already have a commercial compost facility. And it's not that far to take it there. So I'll leave it at that.
Yeah, well, thank you so much, Joe. This is, I mean, what you covered so many excellent points. In fact, I was thinking about the food recovery, that's something we could do a little, I think we need to do a little more work on. But thanks to Donald Bell and the team, we have, I think, as you say, we are ready to go. We have composting pilots going. We've got the city of Laurel has a model of working with the PG CPS schools and doing the funding, which the dollar amounts you say was even less than I had realized. City of Hyattsville wants to follow that model. And I feel like this is one of those areas that we can move. This is where we can move quickly and engage the full community and the element of the students being able to bring home this knowledge and something they can do at home, the way recycling was supposed, continues to be and should be. And, you know, outside of some of the issues that you pointed out, this is another opportunity for that. And thank you for giving us the excitement of knowing that it's possible and being done in other districts successfully. And we hope to, we definitely will be calling on you, on your information and how we can, once this, and whatever we can do on the legislation. I, maybe I'll give Joseph Jakuta a second here to talk, say what we might all do individually on making sure our voices are heard on this legislation.
Yeah, and with this legislation and all the other legislation that's going on in Annapolis, we can make our, as a work group, we can make our voice heard because there's a lot of important legislation, including HB one-fifty slash SB one-twenty-four that is coming down the Pike and Annapolis that's going to affect schools and the environment. I know I'll, we'll be submitting testimony, I guess it's due on Friday for the House version. And I believe there's opportunities sponsored by Clean Water Action right now to send letters to your delegation. I can put that in the chat as well. And yes, thank you so much, Mr. Richardson.
One of the, we are going to have students at Green Valley, Middletown, Oakdale High School. What we're going to do is we're going to make postcards and with images of the recycling compost program that we have. And even the food recovered at a couple of schools. And then we're going to have every student in the school sign a petition. If I have first graders writing, you know, a note to a legislator in crayon, it's going to be better. And then we're going to collect all these postcards, probably fifteen hundred to two thousand of them, and drive them down to Annapolis and dump them on our legislators' representatives' desks.
Excellent.
This is something that has to happen. If any, if Hyattsville wants to get started before the end of the school year, I can help them. Javier Fuentes from Laurel, I think, was mentioned, he was mentioned in Maryland Matters. He's been trying to get something going in Laurel. High schools are not the greatest place to start because the kids eat more of their food and you're changing behavior. More organic material in an elementary school because kids don't eat their lunches. There's just so much more food waste in elementary schools and the students are more pliable. They're easier to influence. Truly, you know, with a few days of showing kids how to do this, they get it. You have to monitor contamination, you have to make sure that you're weighing and measuring things. But it doesn't take more than a week for kids to understand how the program works and where everything goes. So it's much easier to implement than one might think and it should be handled, it should be handled, it could be handled internally with the green teams and having compost ambassadors.
All right, well, thank you so much, Joe. I know we are meeting, we're going to now need to move on to some of our business matters between now and four fifty when we have our stop. But we will so look forward to building our partnership with you and all of the network of, you know, your network of nonprofits that help us get this done. So thank you so much again for joining us today. And of course, you're welcome. Yeah, you're welcome to stay and hear our update if you would like. And so now I'm going to pass this, the agenda over to Kate Colzoni, who's going to review where we are in our drafting and the work ahead of us, particularly for this coming week.
Thanks, Board Member Boozer Strutter. So, and I'll just say, I was a parent volunteer at my child's elementary school during lunch and I saw the huge waste. It was a little alarming when I did that her kindergarten year before the pandemic. So I truly support and love what you're doing and hope we can do something similar in all the elementary and upper schools for PG CPS. So we have been working on creating a straw person document for the Climate Change Action Plan. And we have been using the work of the subcommittees to do that. So I'm going to share, let me see if I can share my screen as I figure this out, make sure I get to the right place. I might not be on the right place when I do it, but I'll figure it out. Okay, so we do have a document in Google Docs. We started working on it in Word. We just thought it would be easier to figure out the template. I'm not sure if that came to fruition or not, but it is now in Google Docs for group collaboration. So we used the PG Climate Action Plan as a template for this. It is not fully fleshed out, but it, there's a beginning. And so what we would like to do is share this with you and in particular, the folks on the working groups. If we could have you look at the various recommendations in each of the sections. For example, I started a table, a recommendation on climate curriculum. And I will love Donald Bell and Michelle and others' input on that. I used the work from the summary chart and I know that there's a lot of updates to be had. So I'm just going here really quickly. So we have, we're trying to follow the same plan like in PG County. So trying to acknowledge the various indicators that recommendations will uphold. And then, and also breaking them down into operational actions, mitigation actions, actions and adaptation actions. We recognize that not every single section will have a table for all of those. So don't feel like you have to put a square peg in a round hole. For example, in the curriculum, I just had an Hawks table. And as you can see, some of it, see, when I transferred it over, I'll fix all that stuff. So we have headers that I'll fix. But, and then we can just put in, these ones are going to be either empty half or full round holes. You can also do like a traffic light type thing. But for the, for right now, we want you to focus on content and less on formatting. Formatting will, you know, put you down a rabbit hole. So don't even worry about that. What we really need is some introduction descriptions for the recommendations that we make, talking about, you know, connections, integration, kind of a concise summary of why it matters. And then for each of the tables, and then there's equity considerations for every single section. Some of these are filled out just as a V-one, version one, others are not. I, some of these other topic areas like labor considerations and implementation haven't been filled out at all. So we need your help over the next week to help give us some help fill in the blanks. So that's the curriculum one, I would say, the one on electricity. Joseph, is that the one you did? That's probably the most filled out. And so you guys.
Electricity and transportation. And yeah, I think they're fairly filled out.
Yeah, so, so, so here's, we're short on time, so here's a couple things. So review based on your subgroup and add either comments, content. You can pick a color if you want us to distinguish between you and someone else or you can put it in the review format for Google Docs. And then make sure that we're aligning to the strategic plan for PG CPS as well as the Prince County Climate Action Plan that was just released. And then spend time on comment, content versus format. So we'll send out these links both to, so this one is in, it's called Working C cap Document in our Googles, in our Google folders under Meetings. We have all the subgroups, we have the meeting content. And then we have this, this this working document here, and that's where it currently resides. So that's where you're going to find it in our Google Drive. Anyone have any questions at this point? Board Member Boozer Strutter, is there any additional context on timing that needs to be communicated that I have not communicated?
Yeah, well, thank you so much, Kate. I really appreciate how you kept this organized and moving through this difficult process. And I know I'm such a visual person that like these nice clean charts are so helpful to me in my writing. And I know that, you know, I'm sort of having to suspend some of that to get these thoughts down. But I think between the three of me, you and Joseph, we probably will be communicating to each of the subgroups the need, you know, so I would say to everyone, get in here on your own, start reading these statements and giving us edits for clarity, for like, I don't really understand what this means. You know, to help us refine those actual recommendation statements. That is our number one goal for now, between now and next Wednesday. And because ultimately, that first section on operations in many ways is what I kind of see is where the board is really giving sort of this somewhat policy-type recommendation. Like these, that first part on operations are the big changes that ultimately we're asking of administration. So, you know, and then mitigation are some of the ways we get there. And to me, that's really where I'm relying on PG CPS and, you know, leaders in our work group who are really going to look at some of those ongoing mitigation. You know, that's going to be like the ten and twenty-year work and the changes in technology. And then the final section is on our resilience. What is PG CPS's role in the county around resilience? And, you know, our buildings as shelters type of thing and building electrical grid? What are the things that we need to be thinking about as things possibly get worse before they get better? Because we're all doing what we're supposed to do for this planet. So that's sort of how I've been thinking through each of those sections. But this is a really critical moment to also say, wait a minute. I remember we had a discussion about X. I don't see anything about. I remember we had a discussion about X. I don't see anything about X in here. And that that would be great for everyone to give sort of like a first line of review on that, too, if we if we missed anything. So that that is what I'd ask now. And I I I do commit over the next, tomorrow I should have some time to work with everyone on where where we, where we really, where we know that you, as a particular work group member, are matched to a particular need. And we're going to ask, ask you some specific, for some specific help. Does that help, Kate?
Yeah, it does. So so we'll be reaching out to you for specific, all of you for specific support. And that might mean that you want to reach out to experts in the field. You know, we're just trying to get some initial recommendations on in the plan by within the week. And then we'll build from that.
Okay. Marita, do you have a question?
Thanks, Pam. You partly answered it. Unclear as to the difference between mitigation and adaptation. I thought I had it defined. And then you helpfully said that adaptation was more about resilience of the resiliency of. Yeah, see, I'm like and hung up.
Yeah, like that long, that longer term, the that resiliency of really, are we, you know, in the worst case, are we holding up flooding hurricanes, tornadoes? When there's, you know, emergency needs in the community, keeping our buildings operating in the current, you know, electric environment. And then, you know, are we going to look at our own grid? You know, those those kind of things. And again, as Kate said, not every, not every section may have every component you know, but I would think, I think stormwater, I guess stormwater management certainly would.
Yeah, I, yeah, there's some pretty significant things that could be done, but yeah, challenging.
And at the beginning of each of the topics, we do try to redefine, we define again for, just to help everyone out, the the three operated, operational definitions for operational actions, mitigation actions and then adaptation actions. And mitigation is really, you know, following the the county plan, it's 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 actions that specifically reduce the greenhouse gas emissions. And so that's, and then then as a board member Boozer Strader said, adaptation is more about resilience and preparation on climate change impacts.
All right, Joseph, do you have a final comments to help?
I was just going to say, sometimes it's, it was challenging to determine exactly which of the categories it would go into because, for instance, installing solar panels is clearly about reducing greenhouse gases. But it also helps you adapt as well by having a power source when the, when the power sector goes out. But it was kind of focused on the primary one. But it was also, I also want to say it's been a lot of fun looking at the document and helping to write it up. So please, I want, I'm excited for my work groups to provide their comments over the next week and the transportations and electric sections.
All right. Thank you so much. So I'm I'm noting our time. So this is our, this is our wrap, our four fifty wrap up today. The next meeting on this Zoom account is the Operations Budget Fiscal Affairs Committee chaired by Board Member Belinda Queen, who will be an important partner to our work moving forward in our our review and her role leading that committee. So if anyone would like to tune in, Joseph and I will be giving a mostly verbal report on pretty much what what we've gone over today. So I want to thank everyone for joining us today. Thank you so much to our special guests and we'll look forward to being in touch over the next week as we all get into the the plan writing. So if everyone has a a great night.
Thank you.
Oh, wait, sorry, one last thing. I misspoke earlier. The next meeting is on February nineteenth. I told everyone the next Board of Education meeting. So I apologize for that February nineteenth.
February, February sixteenth, Joseph.
February sixteen. Oh, time is just, oh, time is just a mess. February sixteen. We shouldn't have David give us updates.
Bye, thanks.